Finding surprisingly, the restroom usage, which we feared would be heavy, has not been. It's really been fairly light. So again, we're being used. People are extraordinarily happy to be coming in the building. They're quickly accessing their items that they want to borrow and they leave. And no upsets or anger about not having any seating nor not giving access to computers. People seem to understand it. When they talk about it, it's more in the context of when do you think you might be able to offer it? And you know, our experiences here at New Rochelle Public Library are very similar to what I'm hearing from our peer libraries. Francis can attest at our weekly Thursday morning meetings. People are saying the same thing. Activity is not heavy. It's lighter. Curbside service is still extremely popular. That seemingly is the most popular option for people to have material brought to their vehicle or while they're waiting outside. And the document that we put together that met with the board's approval, which is the COVID-19 Code of Conduct, is being handed to every single person that walks in. We're also on that same document. We're all also asking them to look at the document and answer the questions that are on the document relative to being exposed to COVID-19 or someone or in an area that is now quarantined. So it's all been very positive. Any questions, any comments about what I've said? Happy to share more information. No. Okay. So it's good. I think as we look forward to the future, we are at this point hoping to reintroduce Saturday as a full day of service like we have in the past, which means that instead of 11 to 1, we expect in September to sort of bring online 10 to 12 noon and 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. so that families that are seeking access to the library but are busy during the week, they'll have Saturday as a day that they can use the library. And you know, we're very slowly looking at when we might be able to allow limited computer use, maybe on an appointment basis. We're still not comfortable doing that, nor are most of our WLS library peers. But you know, we're looking forward to a point in time when we can start relaxing. We don't feel that we're there yet, but we're hoping we will be so in the future. In terms of statistics, they're unusual because they're not the statistics I would normally report during the summertime in which I'd say we have our summer reading game where we have hundreds and hundreds of children in the library reading books. It's different with our virtual reading program for children as well as older folks. And it's not quite as popular as you might imagine. A lot of people are... Families are sort of tired of being glued to a computer screen and they're trying to find other avenues and opportunities to enrich and amuse themselves. But you know, we are still going forward with it. And I hope they have more information about activity in the September meeting. One thing that's really kind of exciting is, given what's going on, I think I started to share in April, that new cards are being handed out at a high number. In April, it was 179. In July, it was double that, over 440, 13 of which were Spanish. 54% are adults, 45% are juveniles. We're finding in July, the largest percentage of people getting new car are tweens, are 12-year-olds and 13-year-olds, which we thought was really interesting. Our community relations department, the staff and our staff are still extremely busy with programs. They're using social media. You know, our Twitter activity is so much larger than now than it was in April. Instagram access as well. Google activity. Our weekly e-blasts that you folks see are continue to be extremely popular. And one thing that I'd just like to very briefly share is that we finished with our survey, which we had in English and Spanish. And I won't go over it all, but I will tell you, we had 70 responses in English. And when we asked people what they missed most, they missed browsing, coming into the library, finding their books and materials, and then children's program and then adult program. And when we asked them, what do you want the most? What can we give you? They said access. They wanted the ability to either use, borrow materials through curbside or come into the library. And what's interesting is that the Spanish responses were smaller in number 25. What our Spanish population, the ones that chose to participate, said the thing they missed most was homework help. They missed computers and they missed all our programs for children and other populations. And again, they talked about, really, it was more educational based, that the library was an important element and helping their children obtain a good education. And they're missing that service from us, which is obviously troubling because we don't have tutors. We don't have that program anymore.
And we don't have the capabilities for it in the COVID world right now.
No, we don't. So that's upsetting, but we're hoping at some point we will be able to return to that. Certainly Monroe College, which is our partner for the elementary school tutoring, has been for many, many, many years. They're ready to resume once we're ready to reopen the doors and reintroduce that program. So that's really it for activity levels. I'm happy to answer any questions if you might have any. Yes, Francis?
Yeah. Tom, do you think we could say a word or two about the audit reports in addition to what I just said? And secondly, charity begins at home. I have to say that our library is up there in terms of being proactive and innovative and catering to the needs of the patrons at a time like this compared to other libraries. I'm in a position to see that and to make that comparison. So I think they're doing very well.
Well, you know, our staff has stepped up in such a big way during this pandemic. It makes me feel very proud of the people we have who want to do their job and understand how important it can be. So thank you for that. And Francis, as far as the audits, I will say, like you, there were some I understood better than others. What I gathered from the audits was that there are certainly lots of issues that relate to WLS in terms of its management, the way it deals with staff, the way it deals with the libraries, its customers. They certainly had some concerns about the VDI project or service, which of course causes us no end of stress even now. It takes our staff time to get into WLS because we sit waiting for VDI to let us in. It also indicated that Evergreen was problematic and they're hoping to find a way to fix it. You know, I think there was some significant discrepancies, as pointed out in the audits. And I'm hoping that the committee that you talked about that consists of people on your board, Francis, and WLS staff and library directors can put together a plan of action that can address these problems. So that's kind of my response about that, that there wasn't a lot of surprises. They pointed out a lot of problems that we all painfully experienced. And now we're just hoping that these problems can be addressed. And with that, I'd like to just talk a little bit about our state grant situation, as I'd said earlier. Year in, year out, our library has applied for state grants. We are the most successful library in the county. We have well over $1.5 million in grants in the last 14 years or so, which is more than double the next library. And it's a tradition that I'm proud to continue. I will say that this year, more than any year in the past, has been challenging because of the COVID-19 issue. We had hoped to have two grants for your consideration. One was at HCL and one at Maine. We do have something for your consideration at Maine. At HCL, as I said, the issue of the roof which needs to be replaced, we just lost months and months of time in terms of putting together a document. So what we hope to do in the future is to be more prepared. We certainly want to work with Sarah, as the chair of the building committee, and CROC and all the members of that co-joined committee to think about where we need to go. In terms of the Maine library...
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question time? So if we were to... I guess my only concern, and you guys can answer this. Sarah, when he first brought it to me, I kind of kicked it back to buildings and grounds. It's like, I don't want us to get a grant for something when we know we have all of this stuff that needs to be done. So I just, I kind of like building and grounds in my mind to kind of prioritize what needs to happen and then what we'd get a grant for because of that. Does that make sense? You're muted, Sarah. You're still muted. Can I...
Yes, that makes sense. The last that I'd spoken to Tom about it, it was going to be the roof for the children's library. And I know that was a priority. So...
So is buildings and grounds saying that's a priority?
We knew that that was a priority from the last time that we met. So the fact that we can't use, right, we can't use the grant for that. It needs to be for the main building. So we need to look at that.
Okay.
No, we actually can have grants for... WLS allows us to apply for a grant for Maine and a grant for HCL. And that's what we've done. And Deirdre, you're right. I mean, it was... We were searching for a project that was part of the building audit. And I did talk with Sarah about different projects. We weren't able to fully sit down and meet as a committee. And I'm certainly, at this point in time, if you feel that we shouldn't apply and just wait for another year, I'm totally fine with that too. The two projects that we will work...
I'm not saying we shouldn't apply. I just want to make sure if we apply, that that's really the priority. And if you guys are saying to me, yes, that's a priority, it's fine.
Right. I think we still need to really flesh out the details. But I think we know what's a priority and what isn't.
Got it. Okay.
We have the overview.
Yeah. One of the priorities that we talked about with Doug Emilio, who was the architect that managed the building audit, was projects that related to life safety. And one of the major ones was reintroducing sprinklers or introducing sprinklers to the other floors in the library to do fire stopping, which means essentially creating a barrier project that... There wasn't adequate fire stopping done in this building when it was built. And the building audit pointed that out as a potential danger. And also the exit signs. And that was all part of that life safety. And the sprinkler project had a price tag of over $900,000, which is far beyond the scope of this grant in terms of getting money from the state as well as our match. So when we talked with Doug, we sort of narrowed it down to those other two elements, the fire stopping, fire barrier, stopping project, as well as exit signs. So if there is a need to evacuate the building, we have appropriate exit signs throughout the building to point staff and the public. And both of those projects total, per cost estimate, is $220,000. And that seemed to us, life safety is always truly important. We also looked at HVAC to continue to improve our air conditioning and system, particularly in the wake of COVID-19. Again, the problem was the total cost was far beyond the means of this grant and our own match to make it happen. So by the very nature of, you know, a limited amount of money, so to speak, we needed to find an important project, but one that was financially feasible. And I'm happy to answer any questions, Deirdre. Yours were good and I'm happy to talk more about it.
I'm good.
Okay. So that's what we're planning to do. And Jean, who is really on top of this, she's been really extremely helpful, as well as our lead custodian, Rob. We've been working with the architect and we're ready to start the process of submitting the grant. But as you folks will remember, in years past, there are three resolutions that need to be approved by our board prior to our application. And they relate to three topics. One is the assurances that we have the financial resources to follow through with this project if we do happen to get the grant, which in the past we've agreed to. The other is the Smart Growth Impact Statement. And the third is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, otherwise known as SECR. And in the past, I've asked for motions for all three areas. The board has made the motion, seconded and voted it in. And if we're going to go forward, we'll need motions for this particular grant application from you folks. So if you'd like, I can give the language and then someone could make the motion and then second it?
Sure.
Okay. So I am asking that our library agree to the assurances as stipulated by the New York State Education Department in relation to the New York State Library Construction Grant Application for the Maine Library Fire Barrier Exit Signage Project. So I need a motion and then a second?
I can make a motion to do what you just said. Thank you.
Thank you, Deirdre.
Any opposed? So the motion passes. Go forth and conquer, Tom.
Two more and I'll be done with my report.
Okay.
Second motion is that the New Rochelle Public Library submits the Smart Growth Impact Statement as required by the New York State Education Department in relation to the New York State Library Construction Grant Application for the Maine Library Fire Barrier Exit Signage Project. So I need a motion in a second for that one too.
I'll pass the motion to submit the required documentation to New York State Department of Education.
I'll second.
Daniel, say all in favor?
All in favor. Sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. One last one and then I'm done. I'm also asking for this last, this third motion for New Rochelle Public Library to declare that the Maine Library Fire Barrier Exit Signage Project qualifies as a State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, Type II action, thus classifying the proposed restorations and use of the above land as requiring no further review under SECR and its implementing regulations. I need a motion in a second, please.
I make a motion to do what Tom just said. Sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
The motion passes.
Yeah. My report is done. Thank you.
Thanks. We will now go... So did you do your statistics?
I did, very briefly, because I know... Yeah.
Okay. So we will go to our committee reports. My committee, I have several, but the ones that I... I don't even know which one I chair. I should know. So budget did not meet. We probably will meet at some point. We did not meet. Personnel did meet. Tom, how much do I say about this? I don't remember.
I think you should consider reporting that the personnel committee meant to talk about reorganization relative to the departure of the community relations coordinator. And we're working on action items in terms of personnel.
That's it. That's it. And we are also working on a contract with our union, which we will share with you guys next month. That's it for personnel. Does policy committee want to update?
Sure. Very briefly, we did meet. We haven't solved anything. So the plan is for the September meeting, we will have ready two policies. One is a policy related to social media and the other policy is related to vacancies on the board. So we will come ready to share the wording and hopefully a vote or else revisions based on comments from the board. And then we will go back and then if we need to, we'll vote in October.
Okay. Special projects?
Cory, you're muted. Still muted. Can't hear you, Cory.
He's not muted, I don't think.
It doesn't look like he's muted.
No, but you can't, we can't hear. Can you hear him?
No.
Maybe turn up your volume?
Maybe he doesn't have a mic.
There you are. All right. So Cory will be back with us or he can chat his update with us if he'd like to, because we can hear him.
I can give an update for... Well, you were on the special projects too, Deirdre.
You can do it.
Sorry, Cory. Yeah, we talked about... We did meet. Actually, he was probably more prepared than I am to speak about this. We talked about... Remind me, Deirdre, what did we talk about?
We are going to have somebody come in and help us.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Yep. Needs assessment. We're gearing up. It's been a little weird, but we did speak with the consultants. We will be scheduling a meeting to make a plan. And we were also wanting it to kind of coincide with the building audit because I think one will kind of help to inform the other. And what was the other topic? Tom didn't raise it, but we're still trying to get to have the sculpture in the side yard removed. I know that's ongoing because there's an ED.
I met the new bid manager. I met with her on Monday. She's really quite nice, a lot of energy and excited to be in New Rochelle and truly wants to continue our collaboration. And I've also asked her to find out the status of the statue that is currently in our memorial courtyard area. Deirdre is reaching out to her predecessor, Ralph DeBart, and hopefully I can have a report for you in the near future.
That's great. Cory, do you want to chat anything else to us for... Thanks, Tom. No, I can't hear you. Can anyone hear him?
No.
We're talking, but we can't hear you.
He's just saying, which should be easier than getting people together and in coordination with building needs. So what you said, we'll be working with the building, building and grounds.
Cory and Whitney, I'm happy to send you the complete survey results. I mean, it's a small sample, but it might be useful as you move forward in terms of needs assessment just to see how our patrons answered a series of questions, provided demographic information.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks, Tom. That's great.
Cory said that would be great, since we can't hear him.
The one thing that wasn't mentioned yet, Deirdre, is the issue of our ongoing relationship regarding subsidizing our hourly staff.
So Tom, I'm going to get to that. Let me do these committee reports and then we're going to circle back to that because I think that might...
Perfect. Thank you.
So Whitney, Cory, and Cory, you can just kind of signal. Are you guys done?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Did community relations meet?
We have not met, but I do have a report that was submitted by the community relations department that I will read. Assistant with reopening efforts by producing a hard copy August newsletter, COVID amendments to the Code of Conduct, a patron safety checklist, and many signs in addition to social posts and digital signage. Two thematic e-newsletters continue to be sent out each week and include content provided by librarians, information that is reliable, resourcing, and community partners. News about the library reopening and details on the three ways to get library material. Social media posts and website updates are made almost daily. The website redesign for easier access to e-resources and platforms for virtual program has been finalized and will go live next week. So that's pretty exciting. Barbara and Denise continue distributing summer reading promotional kits and pick-me-ups at Bracy Apartments, Parks and Recreation Playground pop-ups, the New Rochelle West Cup, 95 Lincoln. Shout out to, thank you to Daniel Bonet. That's what she wrote. I didn't put that in. Three virtual local presentations were well attended. On Tuesday, August 18th, Barbara will be presenting an illustrated talk via Zoom on the three leading suffragists with ties to New Rochelle. Community relations staff members continue attending a number of teleconference meetings to work with our partnering organizations and institutions. So shout out to community relations. That's it.
That's it. And buildings and grounds has not met, I don't think. Is that right?
No, we haven't met. That's me, Chuck, and I guess Beth. I just looked. So Beth is kind of new to the buildings and grounds. So we still have to meet with CROC also.
Okay.
We'll do that before September.
Okay. Did I miss anybody? All righty.
Nominations? Is that coming up?
Did you guys meet? You did? Are you ready to put a slate? You are? Okay.
Do you want to say it, Dan? It was Doug.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Whit. You're VP.
Daniel, Chuck and I met and we voted to keep the officers as current, as the same as last year. So we nominate Deirdre Clark to continue in her role as president of the library board. We are nominating Whitney Barrett, who is me, as the vice president, and Daniel Bonet to continue in his role as secretary. Do we need to make a motion for that? Okay. Then I make a motion to vote for the current slate as just indicated. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thought Cory first, actually. Thank Cory. I feel bad because we can't talk. Cory. Okay, Cory. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Any extensions? Okay. So the motion passes. So this is the officer roster for this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we get to the part-time wager, the wages for the part-timers. And so we have committed to having this discussion every 30 days at our board meetings. And so we are having it now. And Tom is proposing a change, so I wanted us to just talk it through. I think it makes sense, but I want for you guys to hear it and give some feedback. You're on.
All right. As the board well remembers, when we closed the library on March 17th, the board had made a commitment to pay all of our hourly staff at a formula that related to an average of their previous three months' work. And it was really an extraordinary gesture, one that was extremely unusual and certainly in the Westchester library world, and one that was also very much appreciated by our part-time staff and many of our full-time staff too. And we continued this arrangement with the... And we continued this arrangement with the idea that these folks, through no fault of their own, needed to be paid until we reached the month of June. And at the June 11th meeting, after quite a lot of conversation, starting at the May meeting, the June 11th meeting saw the board decide to change the financial arrangement with our hourly staff instead of giving that average wage. You know, through a formula that was devised by Jean Manning and with some input by myself and also a conversation with the Budget Committee, we came up with a scenario where we were coming, we were paying our hourly staff essentially half of what they were making, but also allowing them to, when they could work, to earn money over and above that amount. And we've continued with this arrangement, and now we are here in August. We are two weeks into our reopening. And what we are discovering is that for most of our departments, we are very much seeking our part-timers to come and work, because as a staff, we are working just over 50% of our time. And the hourly staff has been called upon, particularly in adult services and children's, and to a little lesser degree, in circulation services, to come and work. And we think that will continue as we go forward. Certainly, when we open for a more or less full workday, similar to Monday through Friday, on Saturdays, we're going to need our part-time staff that much more. So, it was in the context of conversations with Deirdre, we talked about the possibility of ending this partial subsidy to our part-time staff with the idea that, having reopened, we are bringing them back in, many of them at their work hours prior to COVID-19. So, I'm happy to talk to you if you have any questions, et cetera.
You're muted.
Muted. We spent a lot of time on this, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of the change and what we've done and is on board.
And if things were to return to where we were some months ago, and I seriously and devoutly hope they don't, I would go back to the board. We would go to the board and ask to return to where we were in terms of subsidizing hourly staff, or if we were in a partial mode, you know, maybe coming up with, again, a partial subsidy.
Okay. Okay.
Cool.
Well, before we go to public discussion, is there anything anybody would like to add?
No, I'm just going to say one sentence, which is, I've been very proud of our library for doing what we did and how lovely that we can stop doing it in this, with the circumstances as they are, as you've, you know, described them, Tom, versus, you know, stopping payment for some other reason. But thank you so much for the, you know, your thoughtfulness and for kind of the care. I think that comes across for, you know, how the staff are treated, I hope. You know, I hope everyone feels good about it.
There's a question on whether we need to do a motion on this, and I don't think we do, because, did we do a motion to change it?
Just to talk about it, I think.
I think there was a sense of the board.
I don't think we did a, okay. Okay. If nobody has anything else, I'd like to now open it up to public discussion. We do have people here, all five of them. So, none of them are raising their hand.
Well, let's say you have to raise your hand if you want to talk.
Oh, okay. Well, you have to raise your hand if you want to- Or chat with us or something. All right.
I saw Marjorie was on and then left.
She left.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, going once, going twice.
Text somebody or chat or let us know, and if we don't know, now you know. We have nothing. All right.
There's a mess. There's, Tom, I'm checking a chat. Some, Jesse Betancourt said, "I'm glad the library opened. Tom is a nice director." And I love, I'm assuming he meant, "I love the staff," so awesome job, guys.
Thank you, Jesse.
So, with that said, it is 8:15, is it 8, oh, it's 8:21. And I am going to, before I do that, I enjoyed serving as the President of this board, and I have one more year, and then my term is up. And it's been a real experience this year with the COVID, I tell you.
Yes.
But it's really amazing what our library has done, so it's been really fun. And I enjoy serving with Whitney and Daniel, so I look forward to another year. And unless somebody else has anything they want to say?
My audio works. I Jimmy written it.
Hopefully, everybody has power. We all, we all. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Goodbye, guys. Have a great-
Have safe journey, Deirdre. Everybody enjoy the weekend.
Be safe, everyone. Stay healthy.
Thank you.